I call this meeting to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Thadeo Zael de la Hoya.
Present.
Councilmember Esteban Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Lisette Servin. Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Present.
Mayor Neves Riedel.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Vargas, would you please lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, invocation: Maria Cecilia Cruz, Church for the City.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you Heavenly Father for another day of life as we come before you, council and mayor and vice mayor come before you for the decisions of this city, Lord God, that you would give us the wisdom, the discernment, Lord God, guide us because we are mere humans and we need you. Continue to bless this city abundantly as you have been doing and we give you all the glory in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Mayor, if, may I, before we proceed, I would like to inform that Councilmember Lisette Servin is participating via Teams.
Thank you.
Item number four, call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment. Under ARS Section 38-43101, I, members of the City Council shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public that are not properly noticed on this agenda for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the City Council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed, the City Council may ask staff to review a matter or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
This is a call to the public. Please, anybody that wants to speak, move forward. Okay.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es María Robles. Vivo en el 1195 California Street. Gracias por la oportunidad de continuar comunicándoles acerca del evento Vive para apoyar la Fundación Josefina Yépez. Este día nos han entregado ya los bloques de boletos para, vamos a rifar como premio principal en el evento, una recámara y el costo del boleto será de 20 dólares. Estamos buscando personas que nos apoyen vendiendo boletos o comprando. Cualquiera de las dos cosas es de mucho beneficio y si alguien decide hacer un donativo, tengan por certeza que su donativo debe de estar el cheque escrito a nombre de la Fundación Josefina Yépez. We are, somos, se ha unido con la Fundación Josefina Yépez porque la necesidad es grande, que rebasa los fondos que la fundación maneja. Así que espero tocar sus corazones. Aquí también les comunico a toda la audiencia que si están interesados, se comuniquen con su servidora. Estamos a sus órdenes. Gracias.
Ah, María, ¿cuál es su teléfono, por favor?
Ah, mi número de teléfono es 928-285-3193 y que cree en ese teléfono funciona 24/7.
Gracias.
Nunca está pagado.
Gracias. Mr. Allen.
Good evening. My name is James Allen Jr. I live at 1549 Spad Lane here in San Luis, Arizona. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, all officials and gallery folks from the city and also all of the public. With great consideration and thought to mind, I have came to one point, I know the election is next year. I plan on announcing running for mayor of the city of San Luis. The reason why I'm doing this, I'm not going to look at myself being supported by different groups, but I'm running for the citizens that are here, the people that are the fiber of this city. And I think that I can offer something and bring something good to the table. With that being said, I ask for direction or help, but I plan on doing it from the heart. Folks that are out there on the internet or whatever have you, please consider, if you want me to be your mayor, step up and I'll utilize any help you can give me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Miguel Sandoval y vivo en el 1900 de la calle de San Pedro, aquí en San Luis, Arizona. El motivo de mi presencia se debe al deseo de hacer un urgente llamado a la ciudad, verdad, para que pongan atención de lo que está sucediendo con nuestros campos de fútbol, en especial en el campo del Parque Jorduño. Como ustedes saben, localmente hay una liga de fútbol. En esa liga aproximadamente mil niños y jóvenes se registran para cada temporada. En el año hay dos temporadas, entonces es una cantidad de niños bastante grande, yo creo, ¿no? Hay mucha participación, pero hay en otros años hemos sufrido pues el estado en que se encuentran los campos. Como ustedes saben, el lunes pasado empezó la temporada presente y tuvimos pues una desgracia de un niño que tuvo que ser llevado al hospital de urgencia. Yo estuve ahí como normalmente lo hago, llego antes del juego, llevo a mi hijo y estaban prendidos los espincos de riego, lo cual pues no, no creo que sea muy buena idea. A los cinco minutos de empezar el juego, este niño resbala, pierde el equilibrio y se disloca la rodilla. Este fue muy lamentable lo que se dio, la verdad. Yo me pongo los zapatos de la mamá que se tuvo que ir en la ambulancia y pues desgraciadamente el estado del campo no es algo nuevo. Año con año es la misma queja de los padres, de los coches, pero yo creo que este año pues sí, yo creo que ya sí se... Es demasiado, yo creo. Este, están muy malas condiciones. Yo voy regularmente a los juegos de mi hijo y me ha tocado presenciar. Aparte de ese michito que se dislocó, tres niños que se lastimaron, incluyendo dos ayer. Entonces, mi llamado es a que voltemos a ver las canchas y yo los invito a que, si alguien quisiera acompañarme para que vean con sus propios ojos de lo que yo estoy hablando aquí.
Muchas gracias y lo invito a que se comuniquen con la señora Olivia Jenkins y me encantaría sentarme a hablar con ustedes, a platicar con ustedes. Sé de lo que está hablando.
Sí.
Créamelo que estamos conscientes de lo que está pasando, pero es bueno que vengan y no lo digan para tratar de hacer mejor trabajo. Tenga la plena seguridad, haga una cita con la señora Olivia y encantada de recorrer esos campos con usted. Sé que están bien desanivelados.
Sí.
No hay manera de decirlo de otra manera.
Exacto.
Y yo le agradezco que se tome el tiempo y venga y no lo deje saber. No todo mundo tiene el valor de venir a decirnos las verdades y que tienen toda la razón del mundo. Miles de disculpas, no sabía de este accidente, pero es cuestión de que, no es que si van a pasar accidentes, es cuando van a pasar accidentes.
Sí.
Si están bien desanivelados.
Bastantes. Muchísimas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Anybody else? If not, we can continue.
Item number five, proclamations. Item number five A, proclamation on childhood cancer awareness month, September 2025. Item number five B, proclamation on hunger action month, 2025, September 2025. Item number five C, proclamation on library card sign-up month, September 2025. Item number five D, proclamation on national suicide prevention month, September 2025. Now therefore bid resolve that Mayor Neves Riedel hereby declares the proclamations in the city of San Luis, Arizona this 27th day of August, 2025. Item number six, consent agenda. All matters are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? I second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Let's do roll call, please.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thadeo Zael de la Hoya.
Nay.
Councilmember Esteban Rosales.
Aye.
Councilmember Lisette Servin.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Aye.
Mayor Neves Riedel.
Aye.
Mayor motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven, discussion on possible action items. Item number seven A, discussion on possible action on any and all matters regarding adopting a notice of intention to adopt new and amend business license fees and types. Edgar Esparsa, billing and collections manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Edgar Esparsa, billing and collections manager. The following item is a notice of intent to increase our business license fees and this is a continuation of the presentation that was given on the work session of July 30th. And if approved tonight, this notice of intent will be posted in English and Spanish in the newspaper on the city's website and the public hearing will be held on November 12th. Have any questions?
Any questions coming from council? Nobody has any questions? Well, it was about time. 2005, it was the last time that it was revised, so it's 20 years later.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time and looking at this and this is a very important matter. Anybody else? If not, I want to entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve that notice of intent to increase business license fee for the reason presented.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Nay.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thadeo Zael de la Hoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Esteban Rosales.
Aye.
Councilmember Lisette Servin.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Aye.
Mayor Neves Riedel.
Aye.
Mayor motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven B, discussion on possible action on any and all matters regarding authorization to purchase one fully marked and equipped new 2026 Ford F-250 animal control truck using fiscal year 2025-2026 capital improvement budgeted funds. Lamian Miller, Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, members of the public. The city of San Luis Department is seeking approval for the purchase of one new 2026 Ford F-250. The new vehicle will be assigned to the San Luis Police Department Animal Control Service in order to replace one of our current vehicles that has over 100,000 miles and is constantly down for service. The funds for the purchase of the vehicle were approved as fiscal year 2025-2025 capital projects. The vehicle will be purchased from Peoria Ford, which holds the Arizona State Contract CTR 059322 and has provided a bid of $52,220.16 including tax for the vehicle. The vehicle will be fully equipped and marked by Arizona Emergency Products using City of Chandler contract PD 5-005-4859, which provides a cost reduction from the state dealership contract. The crew provided is a fully equipped and new vehicle total $47,074.23 for the total purchase amount for the vehicle and equipment $99,294.39.
Comments, questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of one new fully equipped and marked 2026 Ford F-250 vehicle for a total amount not to exceed the budgeted amount of $107,360.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven C, discussion on possible action on any and all matters regarding the engagement of engineering services with Dahl Robinson Associates Incorporated for the design of 10th Avenue widening from Cesar Chavez Boulevard to County 22nd Street. Tomas Sanchez, City Engineer.
I will declare a conflict. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you. That's not for the record, but Mayor Riedel is declaring a conflict at 6:16 PM. Kay, please. Kay McQuill for the record. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This, before the city engineer starts, I wanted to give a caution. There is a litigation on 10th Avenue between Cesar Chavez and 22nd Street, which is the same piece of road that the engineer will be speaking of. There's one issue, one of the issues on the litigation is who pays for the design and the construction to widen the road to protect the city. I ask that discussion be limited to protect the city from liabilities. As a background to this particular matter, the city needs a design to be completed in order to request from BLM the remaining right of way that's needed. So with that, I'll turn it over to the engineer.
Okay, before you turn it over, one quick question. I know you're pushing us to not discuss because we're in litigation. However, we are good to vote on this item?
Yes, good to vote on the item, good to discuss matters about the engineering, the cost of the engineering, those types of things to be able to make your decision to make the motion, but just keep the discussion to a minimum.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Before we continue, can I make a suggestion that we go into executive session for legal advice with your attorney regarding the item?
Was that a motion or?
Oh, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session regarding this item.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Cabrera to go into executive session on this item, seconded by Councilmember Cruz. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If anyone opposes, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries six to one abstention from Mayor Riedel to go into executive session.
Thank you.
If no one opposes, I'm gonna go back to regular session at six thirty-five P M. City Engineering Department seeking council approval for the acceptance of professional service proposal from Dale Robbins and Associates for the design of Tenth Avenue widening from County Twenty Second to Cesar Chavez Boulevard. The, this road improvement will help alleviate the traffic congestion during peak hours for residents who travel this section of road daily, particularly in the vicinity of the schools. And the improvements will enhance safety, improve traffic flow, and help reduce and eliminate vehicle and pedestrians accidents. Some of the minor details of the design will include dual travel lanes, center lane, bike lane, streetlights, sidewalk and multi-use path options, right-of-way exhibits, and strong drainage design. Engineering Department is requesting council approval for the acceptance of professional service, Dale Robbins and Associates, for the, to accept the contract in the amount of a hundred thousand as allowed under the City's procurement code three point zero five point zero eight zero, professional services. This engineering firm is on the city's on-call engineering list under resolution number twenty-one sixty-one. There's a typo up there. So that's my presentation. Any questions? Consulma Cabrera.
Thank you, Tomas, for bringing this back up to us. I know we continued the item from our main meeting. Do you have an anticipated timeframe of when the full design will be ready?
Yes, I spoke with the design team this morning, and if we were to, if council were to approve the contract and move forward, we could have the contract executed next week, and within three months, we could be submitted to the Bureau of Acquisition for right-of-way. And with that said, I also spoke with the Bureau this morning, and it could take up to in between six and eight months, depends on reviews and issues that we might, they might, they might pick up that we don't know yet. So eight months, so I think plans for ready for construction, I think they will be ready after July of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Vice Mayor, I move to approve the professional service contract by Dale Robbins and Associates Incorporated for the design of the Tenth Avenue widening from Cesar Chavez Boulevard to County Twenty Second Street in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion by Consulma Vargas, seconded by Consulma Cruz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If anyone opposes, signify by saying aye. Motion carries six to one abstention by Mayor Radel. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Item number seven D. Discussion on possible action on any and all matters regarding subdivision case number twenty-two four dash zero two ninety-nine F, Orchidea Park Town Homes Phase One, a request by Vega and Vega Engineering on behalf of Von Verde Partners LLC for the approval of Orchidea Park Town Homes Phase One Final Plat located at the southeast corner of Twenty Fourth Avenue and County Twenty Fourth Street intersection in San Luis, Arizona. Juan Leal Rubio, Assistant Director of Development Services.
Thank you, Sonia. Good evening, Council members, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and Public Present. Sonia, can you please put the presentation? I have a short presentation for you. Thank you. As mentioned, this is the, a request by Vega and Vega Engineering representing Von Verde Partners requesting approval of the Orchidea Park Town Home subdivision final plat, which is case number twenty-two four zero two ninety-nine F. The property is located at the southeast corner of Twenty Fourth Avenue and County Twenty Fourth Street in San Luis, Arizona, and it's part of Assessor's parcel number twenty-two-two-seven fourteen zero zero-two. To summarize, the subdivision is approximately a hundred fifty-three point four acres in size, with phase one covering approximately ten and a half acres. Phase one will contain eighty-three residential lots that range in size from approximately twenty-seven, twenty-seven square feet to fifty-four hundred square feet. The portion of the parcel covering this final plat is zone R-two, which is medium-high-density residential. This is the zoning map of the subject property showing the location of the subdivision with zoning surrounding the properties, R-three to the west, low-density residential to the south, industrial to the north. And we'll move on to aerial imagery. This is a recent aerial imagery taken a few months back. It shows development around the property and, as you can see, vacant land that hopefully in the near future will be new homes and other type of development. This is the preliminary plat that was approved by the commission a few months back that shows the location of the Orchidea Park Town Homes and other development, which is part of this, this area. This is the final plat of the subdivision. Some pictures that I took of the property, this is looking southeast, looking south, looking east, looking west. Staff is recommending approval of subdivision case number twenty-two four zero two nine-nine F with the following conditions. Part to the recognition of this final plat, the applicant must address comments from common letter prepared by City of San Luis Development Services staff dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five to the satisfaction of the City of San Luis staff. Number two, the developer shall comply with the home agreement approved by resolution number twenty-three, twenty-three fifty. Just to let you know that the letter, comment letter, most of the items have been addressed, and they have to do with the improvement plans, so it will not affect the final plat. And that concludes staff's presentation, ready to entertain any questions?
This time, I will, just to be in the safe side, declare a conflict, so I'm asking Vice Mayor de la Hoya to take over.
Okay, let's note for the record that Mayor Radel is declaring a conflict on this item at six forty-three P M. With that being said, are there any questions by council on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna move to approve subdivision case number twenty-two four dash zero-nine, zero-two-nine-nine F, which conditions as presented by staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by me, seconded by Consulma Vargas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
If anyone opposes, please say aye. Motion carries six ayes and one abstention by Mayor Radel.
Continue.
Okay.
Please.
Item number seven E. Discussion on possible action on any and all matters regarding subdivision case number twenty-two four dash oh-five-seven-eight F, dash Orchidea Park Phase One subdivision, a request by Vega and Vega Engineering P L C on behalf of Von Verde Partners LLC for approval of Orchidea Park Phase One Final Plat located east of Twenty Fourth Avenue and south of Orchidea Park Town Homes One in San Luis, Arizona. Mr. Rubio.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor de la Hoya. I have a short presentation for you. Thank you, Sonia. The request is by Vega and Vega Engineering, representing Von Verde Partners, requesting approval of the Orchidea Park Phase One subdivision final plat, which is case number twenty-two four zero-five-seven-eight F, and also located at the southeast corner of Twenty Fourth Avenue and County Twenty Fourth Street, and also a part of Assessor's parcel number two-two-seven fourteen zero zero-two. This subdivision consists of approximately twenty-seven point eighty-four acres and will contain a hundred and twenty-four residential lots that range in size from approximately six thousand square feet to seven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven square feet. The portion of the parcel covering this final plat is zone medium-density residential, as you can see on this zoning map, which is the same as the previous presentation. Also, the aerial imagery shows the approximate location of this subdivision, just south of the Town Home, Orchidea Park Town Homes. This is the plat, also including the preliminary plat approved by the commission some, a few months back. This is the final plat, it's two pages. Some pictures uptick of the property. Looking west, that would be, I'm sorry, south. West. This staff is also recommending approval- This staff is also recommending approval of this subdivision case number 2024-0578F with the following conditions. Number one, prior to the recordation of this final plaid, applicant must address comments from common letter prepared by city staff dated August 21st, 2025, to the satisfaction of City of San Luis staff. Number two, developer shall comply with development agreement approved by resolution number 2350. And number three, the developer has agreed to install recreational amenities within the subdivision. In the absence of current city standards of such amenities, the developer will ensure that the installed amenities are designed and constructed to align with the city standards adopted by the City of San Luis at the time of their implementation. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rubio. Any questions by council?
I do have a question. Vice Mayor.
Councilor Serbin, then Councilor Cabrera.
Yes, my only question, I'm just looking through the, through the drawings. Is there a retention basin on this new subdivisions? I just can't see it on the computer. It's too small.
Councilmember Serbin, yes.
Yes, okay.
The subdivision should have retention basins.
Can you show me on the, on the picture, please? I forgot to ask you on the other one. We just approved it. Right there.
So I can't read it, but I believe track A.
Track A, yeah. I wanted to make sure it was that one. Okay, track A. Got it. Thank you.
If you could go back to your last slide, please. So item or bullet point number three. The developer will ensure that the installed amenities are designed and constructed to align the standards. How are we going to make sure of that? Is that going to be something that, are they going to pay the city for the city to order? Or are, are they going to use their own vendor? How is, how is that going to work regarding amenities? Developers will be using an authorized vendor by the city or?
Councilmember Cabrera, that's a good question. They would have to comply with what we are proposing as far as the, the city amenities that will be presented, recreational amenities policy that is being presented to council a few months down the road.
Ms. Carpenter?
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Carpenter from Von Verde Partners. I do want to talk to you about this because right now, it's an open checkbook. And because we don't know what the standards are going to be, I would like them to put a amount on there that we don't have to pay more than this towards those amenities. When I was at a council meeting about a month ago or so, the consultants did a presentation on, you know, this subject. But they were way out in left field, in my opinion, in what they wanted to be as amenities. And because we're, I mean, this is, we'd be the first subdivision. And I would like to have some, a dollar amount, whether it's 25,000 or 50,000 or something that I know I can work with before I just agree to a standard that's not adopted yet.
So would you rather have us continue the item until there's something finalized by staff?
Well, I, I think we could agree on that tonight, you know? I mean, you know, I've heard a playground is 25,000.
Mr. Guzman, please.
May I say something?
I have, I want to, I want to have Mr. Guzman say something, and then your next Councilor Serbin.
Okay.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. So the idea of the condition is to make sure that whatever is approved, this development complies with that, with that regulation. If we put an amount right now, whatever is adopted will be different than what's adopted today. So therefore, that's why we put that language in. To add a actual amount, we will recommend to continue the item to the next council meeting.
Okay. Councilor Serbin?
I don't think that you can deny, oh, sorry.
No, that's fine. I don't think we're being fair to the developer. We're asking them to do something when it's not even approved by us yet. And we're not sure if this is going to be approved by the next meeting or so, if it's going to take two, three more meetings to move forward. I really don't think it's fair for the developer to hold on on their development or to ask them to comply with recreational amenities when we don't even know how it's going to go. So I, I just, I think we're doing this backwards. I believe we're having a stakeholders meeting where developers should have a saying, and we will need feedback from them as of, as of this, as, as we're talking to amenities. We just raised their developers' fees, and now we're asking them to add additional amenities, asking them to, to invest more, which is good, but I don't think we're doing it the right way. And we shouldn't be asking for this when we don't, we're not sure yet how it's going to go. I don't think it's, it's fair for the developer.
Thank you, Councilor Serbin. Are there any more questions? Councilor Cabrera?
So based on, Jose, based on the draft that you have already and what was presented to us, maybe you might not know this on top of your, like, without getting into the draft book, but for, for a subdivision of this size, what would be required as amenities based on that draft book?
Amenities has never been clarified before, right?
So we look into the amounts, and we got an average of like 6,200 per lot. In addition, 6,000, a little bit above 6,000. However, we're still going through the process of, of doing the, the actual regulations. We still have a stakeholders meeting on September 25th, which will allow discussion to over the requirements, and it will have to come back to council for the final adoption. So we will have opportunities to, to address those concerns. That number is not the final number yet.
And I'm going to make a comment.
324,000.
We already had a develop.
That's a road, that's a half-mile road. That's a half-mile road that you're asking me to provide for amenities. That is unconscionable. You can't ask your citizens of this town to pay an extra $6,000 per lot and then have to pay the maintenance fee for it, you know, for however long. I'm sorry, but that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money for a subdivision of 143, of 124 lots. So that's, that's 600 and somewhat thousand, right? If not 700. I'm trying to do the math real quickly, but maybe it's 6,000.
Quick question. Jenny or Mr. Guzman? We already had a little developer agree to this same.
That is correct. There was another subdivision approved with a similar condition. That's why we included this, to make sure that all the subdivisions, whether approved right now or after the adoption of the amenities regulations, they comply with the same standards.
Okay.
Again, I don't think it's fair.
So.
I'm going to put my two cents, okay? 6,000 a lot. Nobody's going to come and do anything in San Luis. 6,000 a lot. Is the City of San Luis aware how hard it is for the families to qualify for a house? 6,000 is outrageous, okay? And I don't care if I get in trouble, okay? That, that, what are you going to do in a 300-home subdivision? A million point eight? What, are you going to put gold swing sets? No. You will kill the girls of the town, okay? And you can take it from me.
Mayor and.
Sorry.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, so this is the, the starting point. So we will have the discussions of the stakeholders, and then it will come for the adoption for council. So a lot of changes can be done between there and now.
I think we should approve this subdivision contingent and then wait on the, on the amenities. We shouldn't be holding a developer to move forward with this. And like I say, it's just, this is going to take more discussion than what we're thinking. It's not going to be done in the next meet, in the next month or so. The developer should continue to move. We cannot ask the developer to add something blindly when we, we as a city, we do not know the numbers or the figures or what to expect. How can we expect the developer to agree with something that we don't even know yet? I say that when they move forward, we approve their subdivision, and then we can come back and negotiate what we need to negotiate. And even if it's this, if this goes through, we need to give some time to the developer to adjust their prices, their needs, and everything that's going to be needed to move forward. Let's say we do end up implementing the amenities, then we have to give the developers three months, six months before we start implementing those amenities. I don't think it's fair that, that they need to be added to the development when we, like, again, we do not know how it's going to look like. We're just estimating.
That's exactly what number two, three says, what you're saying. This is just so we don't stop the developer from continuing and from the city to finish their process. That's, that's what you said. That's the, that's the wording of, in a simpler layman's terms, that's the wording of number three. Am I correct? Am I correct, staff?
Yes, I, I would recommend that we move forward because the other developer, we put the same language. I think that the stakeholders, along with the city council, will have the opportunity to review the amenities and eliminate, you know, and make changes so that it doesn't impact the developers or the customers in the future. You guys will have that ability. The reason we came up with the amenities, it was because it was a council direction to come up with some guidance on that, and that's exactly what we did. And so we don't want to move forward, we don't want to stalled on, on the subdivisions. But we also want to be fair that the council gave us direction to come up with some amenities. And so, again, the council, the stakeholders will have the opportunity to eliminate. If we requested a playground that cost 20,000, maybe we change and the playground costs 10,000. I don't know. I mean, those are the kind of discussions that we will be able to have, and council will have the authority to reduce, eliminate, change, amend, whatever you need to do in the amendments so that it doesn't impact the developers, if that is what you wish.
Yeah, I think the last thing we want to do is hurt develop, any developer and/or our, you know, residents or the housing market.
Right. We need to make sure that we continue with affordable housing, and this is not really helping. And I encourage every developer to show up to that stakeholders meeting. It's really important to hear from them. The other side of the story, of course, we have to look on our side for the city and the citizens and what is best for our community. But we also need to look for ways to incentivize our developers because our developers are doing a great thing in our community. They're, they are growing along our side, and they are really important to us. But we want to make sure that we're being fair to all of them. So I really, really, I know Ms. Carpenter is there, is there. I don't know who else is there. But I do encourage all developers to show up to that stakeholders meeting. It will make a huge difference.
Thank you. Anyone else for council?
Yes, Jose, let me ask you, when was the last time that we were in the same situation where we couldn't implement the amenities because we were not ready? And we were supposed to have these amounts in two months or three?
That's probably six, eight months ago.
That was last year, September.
Yeah.
Jose, that question was for you.
Councilor Vargas, yeah, it was a few months ago. However, the city got a consultant to do the work. Last year, I believe.
It's going to be a year next month.
Yes.
Yes, I.
I think I was in the office twice or three times asking you for this to be ready for the next subdivision. So I agree that we cannot punish the developer because our fault, but we need to have that situation ready as soon as possible.
Yes, I mean, have the developers been involved all these eight months? And we have, have we had their feedback or just the consultant's feedback? Because, I mean, like I said, this is, this is going to take maybe longer than, than six, than six, eight months. It's, it's something that we need to consider. Plus, on top of that, developers are coming up with retention basins, and retention basins are not parks. So we really need to look into that amenities that we're trying to put on a retention basin, and we need to make sure that what we're doing is right. And I understand we already have parks that have amenities, but that does, I mean, yeah, the retention basins that have amenities, but that doesn't mean we've been doing things the right way. And we need to make sure, if this is going to be something that is going to be on our radar, we need to make sure that we have the right information. And stake, as stakeholders, we need to make sure developers get involved in this decision.
Again, that's why.
Right.
Number three, it's on there, so we don't stop development, we don't hurt develop, the developer, and we don't hurt our market. If there are no more questions, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Can I, can I make one more comment, please? Can I make one more comment? So I don't think that you can deny approval of this subdivision based on, what do you call it, adoption of a standard that's not in place yet. So we have complied with all of the, we have complied with all of the regulations that are currently in place. And you cannot deny me approval of this subdivision with this language in there because you have something there that is not even adopted, and you've only hired a consultant. So what happens, I've sold out on this subdivision. And three years later, you come to me and you say, oh, by the way, now you have to put in 100,000 or 150,000 or whatever the number is. I mean, six, if it's $6,000 a lot, you know, do the math. That's about 800, how much?
744,000.
Yeah, 744,000.
We shouldn't be adding this language to it.
I mean, you know, I can't, I can't do business that way.
No.
I just can't do business that way.
Councilor Cabrera?
So Jose, what other subdivision have we approved with this language?
It was Mesquitas Four.
And how many lots was that?
Around 300, I believe.
Lots at $6,000, that's 1.8 million.
So the, the current draft that we have and the number is like the, the, the first draft that we have from the consultant. And it took, it had been a, a long process because they, they take in consideration all the cities in, in the state. So they came up with the, like, the middle number, 6,000. But that's just like the starting point of the conversation. He has to go through the process of stakeholders and having developers involved and balancing the cost of development, but still keeping affordable housing. But this condition will get that the other subdivisions have the same recreational amenities with that language, so.
Okay, let me, yeah, we agree. But, but we were told was totally different than 6,000 per acre, okay? We never had agreed to that outrageous thing, okay? You showed me some of the, of the amenities, and they looked decent to me. Fair enough. I'm one of the ones that is pushing that we have to do something for the children of this community. But 6,000, I would be killing myself. So we never discussed 6,000, okay? Am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I won't, I mean, I'll stop right now. And believe me, I would do it because this is killing the market. Affordable housing will be a thing of the past. And this is one of the things that really, I, I get outraged. We go and hire these consultants. We're not in Scottsdale. We're in San Luis, Arizona. You know, I've been attacked because I said we're a poor town. And when I said that, I mean, 80 to 90% of the people that are buying houses in San Luis, Arizona, they qualify because the government gave us that title. We're rural and we low income. I didn't invent this. This is the truth. And, and that's why San Luis has been growing because of that title that we got. They're going to get rid of it soon. We might as well take advantage of right now. Next time that we have the census, it's going to change, people. It's going to change. But $6,000 per, per lot, do you guys have any idea how much it costs to develop a lot? I'm pretty sure none of you have that.
I can tell you.
Me too.
Can, can we go back and, can we go back and revise those subdivisions that we approved and eliminate that language in the contract? Because I don't think we should have that language, number three, in anything right now since we are still. since we are still working the details. So I don't think we should be, that language, I don't think it's, it's right. It's just.
And, and I, I'm gonna put my neck way up there for somebody to sue me, and I don't care. I think we should approve this subdivision, eliminating number three, okay? That's it.
Yes.
It should be. They had worked. They had paid. They have done everything by the book, okay? This, this six thousand dollars a lot will kill this project. So when you guys are ready with real numbers, so we can really decide if we wanna build in San Luis or not, and then we'll discuss this one. But this subdivision should be approved because it's the right thing to do.
But we're assuming it's six thousand dollars. No one is sitting at a dollar amount.
But, 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 but the thing is.
We can't prove anything on assumptions.
Three or four.
Even a thousand dollars a lot?
We, we just can't be approving things on assumptions. We need real numbers. And since we don't have the real numbers, we need to delete that language and move forward in approving the subdivision for, that we have in front of us, but eliminating that number. We, we cannot prove something on assumptions. We just can't.
I totally agree with, uh, with Councilmember Serbin, and we hardly agree on anything.
True.
Okay, so, uh, so i- if this is wrong in all levels, okay?
Councilmember Cabrera?
So I do like the idea of the one thousand dollars per lot, but then we come.
No, those are assumptions, Councilmember Cabrera. We can't.
I'm speaking. Can I finish my thought? So the problem with that is if we get a subdivision that is only twenty or thirty or forty lots, and we only get thirty thousand dollars, what amenities are we gonna be able to provide? I think that we should, like you said, go back and we're not gonna ask Los Mesquitas to cough up one point eight million dollars because they approved it in their subdivision plan, and now ask carpenter of a possible open checkbook of seven hundred forty-four thousand dollars for amenities. I mean, that's just outrageous, but we don't want to hold back from having this subdivision move forward. Now, when we did this last year on social media, we were attacked. We were told that we didn't care about the community, that we didn't care about having parks, and that residents enjoyed, um, a swing set at least. So it's, it's not about being attacked on, on social media or not. The fact is that we are not being fair to the developers and all of the developers. I think that when, when we're asking for, for them to, to install recreational amenities, we can go and Los Olivos, they have amenities. They have a swing set. They have a playground. And how much is a playground? Twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars? So we go to, we go to, um, Bienestar nine, nine B, I believe. They, they all have amenities. They have a basketball court. They're bigger subdivisions. So we don't have a dollar amount to attach to, to your subdivision. We didn't have a dollar amount to attach to Los Mesquitas when it was approved. Los Mesquitas was approved like that because the owner said, I'm willing to commit to follow the, the guidelines without the owner knowing how much they were going to pay. Now that the owner said, oh, I, I didn't agree to six thousand dollars, obviously nobody did. And, and here in, in our diets, we have a loan officer who knows that six thousand dollars more on a house might disqualify people from owning a home. Like, we cannot go that direction because it will kill our market. We need to think about our working families, and we need to be fair. So if we need to bring back Los Mesquitas subdivision and remove this language, I'm up for it. I agree that we should remove bullet point number three. This wasn't even on the presentation on the agenda. I just found out right now. If you open the agenda item, the presentation, this does not have this. So if I wouldn't own this, I would have done my due diligence, and I would have spoken to staff about not having this fiasco here, but this presentation was changed, I don't know when, but the agenda item does not have item number three on the presentation. So this is to me new, and, and maybe you did agree to this, but like you said, you don't wanna do an open checkbook, and we don't want you to do an open checkbook for amenities, just like we don't want Los Mesquitas, and just like we don't want Bienestar and any, any other development, but we should remove it. It's not even on the agenda.
It is on the agenda and has been in the agenda, number three. It's just more clear in front of you on the screen, but it's, it's right there.
And it's, and it's fine if it's.
I opened the presentation and it's not here. I have the presentation.
Well, it, it's, it's fine if it's there, it's not there. That's why we're having this meeting, so we can just, have that discussion on the items, and that's what we're doing. We're not, we're not doing anything else, but every decision that we make is going to impact our community as a whole, not just the developer, also our residents. So we need to make sure that we take time when we're talking about topics, topics like this, because they are really important for our community. So if it wasn't, or it is, it was not, I mean, it, it doesn't matter. That's what we're here for, to take a look at those details and make sure that we come into consensus and we agree on something. So what you said, we, right now, is pretty much a summary of what we've been discussing, so, so it's, it's good. I think we should move forward, approve the subdivision, and, and delete item number three. That language is not necessary.
So with that said, I move to approve subdivision case number twenty-two-four dash zero-five-seven-eight-F with conditions as presented by staff with the removal of bullet point number three, which is to require amenities and not, um, have the developer have an open checkbook with the city.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Cabrera, uh, second by Councilmember Serbin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If anyone opposes, please say nay.
Nay.
So I have a question. You guys jumped in a little bit on me. You have to clarify amenities, though, because when you say amenities, I think of amenity as a ramada, not a playground. So you have to put that clear verbiage in there as well if you wanna specify what type of amenities you want.
This throwing, they're throwing it out, out there.
Yeah, that, that's why we're removing it, because it's not clear at the moment.
So with one point eight million dollars, we're gonna ask the mayor to do a, a swimming pool for Los Mesquitas four?
That's not an item on the agenda.
That will be part of the, uh, of the final, um, standards, which will be approved by council. So the final amount of those amenities will be presented to council and approved by council.
Okay.
Yes.
So. Was it a three-three?
I would like to amend my motion if I can, Vice Mayor.
You would like to amend?
Amend my motion.
Okay.
Roll call.
No, he's amended his motion. What would be your amended motion? Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me go back to our train, recent training. There was a motion. There was a second. You need to move to amend your motion. Councilmember Cabrera?
If we wanna set a dollar amount for amenities to be included, not to exceed, I mean, five hundred dollars per lot is sixty-two thousand dollars, I think, off the top of my head.
That sounds.
Sixty-two thousand dollars. That could give you a ramada, according to Parks and Recreation. When they did their presentation, that can give you a decent playground, maybe even a swing set.
We're still moving on assumptions. We need to have the stakeholders meeting and have developers involved. We can't throw numbers like that. We can't throw numbers like that.
The developer from, from, from moving on with their item, so.
Yeah, we just need to approve the subdivision today and remove number three.
Okay, that motion is not longer on the floor. There's a sec, another motion. Is there a second to the motion that was, that was just made?
Second. Okay.
What motion?
Just to clarify, which one? The one with five hundred dollars per lot?
The one he just said.
Okay, the amended motion, okay.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Cabrera, seconded by Councilmember Rosales. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to say nay?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries for, you're abstaining, right?
I'm abstaining.
So, um, for, for two.
And what was the motion, please?
So the motion is to approve the resolution with a five hundred dollar.
Cap.
Cap. Cap of lot, per lot, so not to exceed sixty-two thousand dollars. I think that's what it comes out to. It's a hundred and twenty-four lots, so a hundred and twenty-four lots times five hundred dollars, that's sixty-two thousand dollars in amenities. Now, if it goes over and.
That's why.
Your heart, you want to donate the rest, and that's fine, but at least we have something for the residents.
No, I don't agree.
It was already approved.
Well, it was approved, it was already moved and approved. Thank you.
What was approved?
I'm gonna go up to item number seven-F. Discussion impossible action on in El Maris regarding ordinance number four-sixty-nine. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, amending city code subsection two point oh-five point four-sixty subsection B to align the city council minutes requirement with current state law ARS thirty-eight-four-thirty-one dash oh-one-C-four, repealing conflicting provisions and providing perseveranceability. Ms. Kay?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Uh, this item cleans up our, uh, city code that says that members, uh, decide whether to mark in the minutes who, uh, voted, and the state statute requires, under open meeting law that was amended a few years ago, uh, to put the names of the votes and all that. So this cleans that up. Uh, we've been doing it the right way since the statute was changed, but this just codifies that. And in addition, it allows for, um, if a council member is silent during the vote, that that vote will be counted as an aye. Uh, several communities in Arizona do it that way. Apparently, that was the training that the clerks got. Um, for example, we found that Yuma, Avadale, and Oro Valley, um, responded to a listserv that they, uh, do it that way.
And we have been doing that for years.
And we, and it's been our practice for years, so it just puts that into place.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
I move to approve the reading of ordinance number four-sixty-nine by title only.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Cabrera, seconded by Mayor Riedel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If you have anyone opposedes, please say nay. Ms. Sonia?
Ordinance number four-hundred-and-sixty-nine. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, amending the San Luis city code section two point zero-five point four-sixty to align the city council minutes requirement with current state law ARS section thirty-eight dash four-thirty-one point zero-one-C-four, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing perseveranceability.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve and adopt ordinance number four-sixty-nine as presented.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Cabrera, seconded by Councilmember Vargas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If anyone opposes, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number seven-D. Discussion impossible action on in El Maris regarding annexation case number twenty-two-four dash oh-one. An ordinance number four-seventy. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of San Luis, Yuma County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title Nine, Chapter Four, Article Seven, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto, by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of San Luis, approving infrastructure and service plan and adopting zoning classifications for said territory and approving and providing perseveranceability. Mr. Jose Guzman?
Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members, this is the final step of the annexation process that was started, uh, last year. With this ordinance, the, uh, city limits will be increased by two, uh, a little bit over two square miles. So, um, it will be effective in thirty days, sixty days, excuse me. So it will be on October twenty-sixth. I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Vice Mayor, move to approve reading of ordinance number four-seventy by title only.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Vargas, seconded by Mayor Riedel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If anyone opposes, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number four-hundred-and-seventy. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of San Luis of Yuma County, State of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title Nine, Chapter Four, Article Seven, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto, by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of San Luis, approving infrastructure and service plan and adopting zoning classifications for said territory and providing perseveranceability.
Is there a motion?
I move to appro, uh, to approve and adopt ordinance number four-seventy as presented.
Second. Moved by Mayor Riedel, seconded by Councilmember Vargas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If, if anyone opposes, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, summer experience events. Events of mayor, council members, and/or city manager pursuant to ARS thirty-eight-four-thirty-one oh-two-K. Anyone? Hearing saying none and Councilmember Cruz?
We attended the League of Cities, um, and I just wanna start off with something very positive, as always. The city of San Luis shines bright, um, displaying their showcase. Um, this is something that is positive because we can promote our city with some of, uh, the, um, businesses, um, product. Of course, people were coming up to us and saying, you guys always have the best showcase. And when we hear positive remarks about our city, that is a plus, as we know that we would like to shine bright, and we do continue to shine bright. Another thing that I would like to comment is, one of the, um, sessions that I attended, um, was, um, on transportation issues. Of course, you guys know all of about our transportation issues here in San Luis, and one of the things that I mentioned is that San Luis does not have, um, new roads, and that's something that we need. San Luis has only two ways to exit and enter the city. And of course, we know that there is no funding for that. So I urged everyone attending that session that to, um, make it a priority of making transportation issues at top of their list because we need new roads. We only have funding to patch up our roads and stuff like that. That's not, you know, we pay taxes, and there has to be something done about that. Um, I spoke to Senator Farnsworth, and he is a great advocate for, for transportation needs. So, um, new roads is on top of my list, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Anyone else? Seeing, hearing none, and seeing no further business on the agenda. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-four P.M. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.